Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 26, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Um, all five selectmen are present, as well as Town Council, Richard Bowen.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Kelly, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see, announcements, well, let me see, Peter?
Uh, Town Hall is closed tomorrow, so don't go to Town Hall tomorrow and expect to do any business on Friday.
All right. Alan?
Uh, no, the only thing I've got, the only thi-
Yes, Alan, thank you.
Is that working okay, Bob?
Yes.
About time you turned this foolish thing up. No, I had him turn the volume up.
Wait, I couldn't hear, they were clapping.
Yeah, you know what you can do with this. This past week, we had a pretty heavy rainstorm. Unfortunately, the sandbag barriers along Minot Ave for the, with the Deacon School and the minor schools being built breached in three major areas. It was like a pictures you see, you know, some third world countries where there's a major storm and the dirt's running down through the city, town, whatever. Both sides of the road were completely covered. It was probably three to four inches deep of mud and crap and everything else. I'm gonna say most likely our stormwater drains are probably completely plugged and not working now because there's so much coming through there. We need to make sure, and I think, Patrick, I think you got a call on it also, that they basically, whoever the contractor is, gets in and fixes the mess they made. But it was unbelievable the amount of stuff running out of there. That's it.
It's funny, I had a call, I had a call actually from your wife.
Why not?
The big, big Kahuna, earlier tonight, so I put in a call already to the site supervisor to find out, because I didn't go by there, so I didn't see it. So I called the site supervisor and I'm waiting for what they plan on doing to relieve the issue in going forward into the future as well.
Yeah, we came back that night coming down Minot Ave from Great Neck, and we were watching the mud and the water coming down toward Great Neck, which was surprising, because normally it goes the other way, down. So it was both directions, and it was just everywhere.
And they put in trenches inside the barriers.
Oh, yeah, I mean-
Trenches with stone and everything, and that didn't even help.
Didn't matter.
Went right through it, so-
It blew the bags right out.
They're gonna have to do something to alleviate that problem, because, and fix the drains now. The drains are gonna have to be cleaned.
The drains are messed up now. Thank you.
Mr. Menus?
Um, don't have a heck of a lot. There was a gas leak there, too, wasn't there?
Yeah, there was, they hit a gas sp-
With a big excavator.
Yeah, they shut the road down.
Where do those, where do those lined pits go? I mean, they're just, uh-
The lines, you mean the gas lines?
No, the, um-
The storm drains, they just go into the soil?
They're not drains, so they're just, it can handle extra amount.
Yes, and they figured that there was, the last time I talked to them about this, the day that we had that rain, and it was raining pretty hard, which was not this storm, but the storm before, they had a million gallons of water coming down that site all at once. And remember, there's no actual drainage in the ground yet, so they just have temporary stuff up.
I know that.
So that means that it's gotta go somewhere, you know? Unfortunately, it didn't go in the methods that they chose, so they're gonna have to choose a better method.
I'm sure they will. I don't have anything, really, thank you.
All right, uh, nothing?
Nope.
All right. Next one is Citizens' Comments. Now, I know she wasn't here, because she called on the phone, so we should be okay with that one.
You got it.
She called ahead. Board Comments, let's start with you, Alan.
Okay, first off, you've probably heard, say, the governor's signed the $1.5 billion school bond bill, as they call it, which looks good on paper. It's supposed to level a playing field for all the different cities and towns. As I mentioned before, and I gave the information to Derek a few weeks ago, we'll have to see, because the way this works, the cities and towns require to put a certain dollar amount on a yearly basis, and the formula and stuff is, could cost the town of Wareham $400 to $600,000 a year more than they're, that we have right now at the end of the day. So until the actual numbers come out, we'll need to see exactly what it is. The school should get some money, but at the same time, on the town side, as far as how the money flows, we may have to come up with more money on our side. So it's not the panacea that initially is being discussed, which is half the time. Most of the time, the state will give a program out and fund it 100 percent. Within five years, they seem to disappear. In this one here, they're right up front, saying we're gonna do something, but at the end of the day, it's not what they say it is, so watch it very carefully.
They changed the foundation numbers, that's the problem.
Well, they, they, they really haven't changed the foundation numbers in the way it needs to be done, because we get penalized because of our waterfront properties and a few other things. So we don't, we should come out better than where we are, but because of our demographics overall, it doesn't work for us. And they've not fixed that issue at all. The signs that we wanna put up for the industrial park, et cetera, over by Recovery Road, I was supposed to have a meeting today with a lawyer and stuff who's done some work over there. Unfortunately, he got tied up in court all day, so I'll get back to everybody next Tuesday. I have a meeting with him on Monday instead. I sent all the selectmen a copy of the Route 6 and 28 piece everybody got. This has to do with changing, she's not Route 6 and 20, it should be Route 28, sorry. She's Route 6, my error. Talking about going from Fairhaven all the way to Wareham, changing from a four-lane highway to a two-lane highway with a third-lane turn. They'll be presenting, I believe it was Marion and Matapoiset. I won't be, won't be available for me to be there. I'll, I'll basically be discussing it next week on the fourth with Serpent, but I would ask that at least one or two of the selectmen attend, at least one of the meetings, because it has a direct, you know, it has a real good, strong effect on how we function as well. So I need input, you know, so I'd appreciate someone going to that. Thank you.
All right, Jim?
Representative Gifford had her office hour today, so I stopped in, just checked, see how the, how some of the, other mobile home parks and the casino legislation is going. And it's a two-year session, so it'll just automatically roll over, so she won't have to resubmit. Talking about the possible gambling casino racetrack, you know, we probably somehow and some way, we should reach out to Senator Pacico and make our case. Either invite him here or do something.
We're getting nothing out of Senator Pacico.
Well, but that's, you know-
He was the only one who went up there and spoke against it.
It's just, you know, he's our senator, and, you know, we, all we can do is put out a hand, and maybe, maybe he'll come down and talk with us, explain on his position and, you know, I don't think it would hurt, but that's just my opinion. And also, you know, the crossing over there on Swift Beach Road and Route 6, and we've been talking about that, there's no lights at that crossing. At night, it's just some pitch black. I don't know if everybody's been hit during the day or if it's been at night, but-
It's been during the day.
It should be, it should be lit, though. You know, when you have a crosswalk going across a four-lane highway, you should have like a light on either side to illuminate it. It's a storm, not like up the road, 150 feet or 200 feet.
If I understand it, we, that's actually being talked about now, right?
Yes.
Which it wasn't, so that's good.
I don't know.
They're talking about putting a light there, so I guess we'll see how it works out.
Talking about putting a traffic control-
Correct.
Putting a patrol there, but he's talking about just illumination generally.
Illumination for the time being. I don't know if the state does that, or if that's a town.
That would be the state, it's a state road.
Okay, so-
It would be in the layout of the state highway that the, the light stanchions that are there now-
Are all state.
Would be, so-
Right, so-
Anybody knew, we'd have to go in there.
I just, you know, even if we don't immediately get a traffic light there, illumination would be good. And, and, you know, all crosswalks where they're located should be under illumination, you know? Even going through the center of town.
Is this the city road?
Yeah, yeah.
What you could do with that, Jim, is we could ask if they would put a, what they call an illuminated crosswalk sign, like we have downtown, that at nighttime it lights up and says crosswalk.
Well, something would be good, and you're the man, you're the man in that seat, so if you could do something.
I've already, I've already asked, so we're, we're looking at it anyways.
And again, even just illumination, you know, on poles.
They're looking at the traffic light, too, they pushed it up a little bit.
That would be good.
So we'll see.
That's about it, I guess. I just figured I'd say that I stopped in and spoke with our rep and, you know-
Okay, thank you.
Tried to see how things are going.
Peter?
Uh, I wasn't gonna have anything to say, but I just got a text informing us that the hearing to amend Chapter 40B, which would be the mobile home bill, is going to be 10:30 in the morning in Room B2 on December 3rd. So, again, that's the 40B hearing, 10:30, Room B2 on 12-3, for anybody who'd like to attend and hopefully testify in favor of that legislation. It never seems to make it out of committee, but, you know, we keep sending it up there, and every so often, one of us will go up and testify in favor of it and just keep tilting at the windmill.
Is that the one to set up a committee to look at the issue? There's three different bills that are in place.
Yeah, I'm not sure, she just referred to it as the 40B hearing, so-
All right, thanks.
All right.
I'm sure the website will have the specific bills listed for that hearing session.
Okay, Mary?
Nope.
All right, Appointments, reappointments and interviews. Mr. Kelly, come on down.
I'll check with the MMA.
Tell us your name and who you are, and the microphone and all that good stuff, in case we don't know.
Good evening, my name's John Kelly, I live in Wareham, I've lived here most of my life. I also work for the Fire Department as an Assistant Chief. I've been in public safety for going on 25 years, so.
All right. All right, so John is applied to be on the Police Study Committee?
Mm-hmm.
And does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask John?
No, I have no problem at all, no issue.
Yep, I hear that.
Well, I'd like to just know, what do you think the situation in the present building is? And do you have any ideas of, you know, locationally or otherwise, that you think would, it doesn't have to be exact, or what would be best, where would be a good location to have something like that access and egress-wise?
Well, I have been in the current station, I've been in there for many years. They've outgrown that, pretty much when I started my career. I've seen it, it wasn't adequate back then, nor is it today for the amount of volume that they do there. In regards to location, I think the biggest thing you have to look at is where the town has property, you know, to put one of these facilities. Do I think that there's different avenues that I think you could go down? Absolutely. But I just think that you have to kinda keep an open mind and look, you know, not just be narrow-minded with one or two different spots, I think you have to look at the whole picture.
Good, thank you.
I have, I have no questions.
It's not really a question, it's more along the lines of an observation, but, you know, we also appointed Charlie Kluber, who's a Prudential Committee member in Onset, and now we've got you before us, you know, seeking appointment as an Assistant Chief of the Wareham Fire District. You know, going forward, I hope that the Study Committee will consider not just, will consider this not just as a police station exercise, but possibly look into whether we can also combine other entities beyond Wareham Police and EMS. I mean, we've got two fire districts, I know Onset has appropriated money, and they're looking to build a new fire station. Maybe they're too far along in their process to, to back out and get involved in this, but I know that Wareham has been seeking a new fire station for a long time. It's not the greatest location in a, in a town that gets category three hurricanes occasionally. You know, you guys are gonna be operating out of the Town Hall parking lot if something like that happens. So, you know, I would hope that with having a couple of experienced fire professionals on there, that some consideration could be given to expanding sort of the mission of what the Study Committee does. I think it would be good for the taxpayers, I think we need to start looking at trying to combine efforts here. You know, you work for a different government, but we're all in the same town, so I think it's time to look at things in that light and try to come up with things that make sense, so we can save the people who pay the taxes some money, if at all possible. So I hope that you can bring that to the table from the Fire District.
Yeah, I, when I talked to John, because I talked to him originally when he, he made inroads of whether he thought it would be good, and I, right away, you know, I've known John a long time, and I know he's very meticulous about stuff, and that's good, you know, he has that way about him, he'll check everything out, because he's like that. And he mentioned right away that, you know, we have an emergency response committee, basically, or team, to respond for these kinds of emergencies. And right away, he thought about, well, you know, wherever it is, they should have capabilities to handle that emergency response situation as well. So I thought that was good right off the bat. The other thing I want to mention to people is that the police station, when it was built originally, was cut in half. It was, they had, they had a need, a certain need, and then they decided they didn't want to spend so much money, so they cut it in half. So they literally halved it by 50 percent reduction in its size. So it was undersized right out of the box for what, what the use was. And then, of course, we're many years down the road now, over 50 years down the road, 50 years, something like that, a little short of that, probably. So it's, it's, it makes a big difference in that it was flawed to begin with, so hopefully we can get involved and get it straightened out. It's about time, I think. All right, could I have a motion, please?
All the comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
We've been working over the last five years, actually, and actually, what happened was, I think when Mark Andrews was the town administrator, we actually were supposed to put $50,000 for doing an engineering study for the police station, and the Wareham Fire and Water District also voted, and they went ahead and put $50,000 there, we never did. For some reason, we backed out, which we were supposed to do, really, because the deal was back then is we were gonna try and put together a program where the two, even though it's a district and the town, we're gonna work together to have a single location area for everything. And that actually has been in place that long. And then they, recently, the Fire Department decided about a year ago to back off the property, because that property, which is across from Rosebrook, the original plans, which I'm sure you've seen as well, had the fire station here and the police station here on that piece of property. So that's, it's something that's been working for a while. So it depends whether or not, you know, the Fire and Water District wants to step back up, because they backed away mostly because of the new water treatment plant, which was gonna be $14 million, and they really didn't want to subject the residents to that much more expenses, and they kinda backed away. So now it's on us to see what we can do, and maybe we can bring them along, but it's been on discussion for quite a while.
Well, you know, one of the things, in 2003, we had a Study Committee, and it was sunsetted in 2004, which was too bad, because what it was set up to do, it had done, we spent $50,000 back then to do a study, and it, we have the fruits of it, we have all the information from it, but it needs some updating as well, you know what I mean? So we have something to start with, at least, thank goodness. And if we had kept it going, believe it or not, I think in the original plan, we're about on track for when it should have been ready to be built, believe it or not, so, so, believe it, that's true, you know, so we'll, hopefully, it'll come to pass.
And I just want to say, I'm in agreement with what Selectmen Title Bond is saying regarding, you know, looking at the town as a whole and our, you know, safety departments and, and it's food for thought.
Well, and just so you know-
The committee's not there to do that, but-
Well, just so you know, when we had our preliminary meeting, we had the chief come in, the chief, and the chief at the time wasn't too excited about doing anything at this point with your building. So we'll see how that evolves. And I told him, I said, "Well, okay, if you're not ready now, maybe as time goes on, we can evolve into something," you know, as time goes on. So he said, "It was just time wasn't right, right now, but maybe as this process plays out and as everything becomes knowledge, then all of a sudden, it says, 'Well, maybe we are ready,' you know, who knows?" You know? But let's go forward, anyway. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion submitted.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any, any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. We have a verification here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for stepping up, appreciate it.
Be safe.
I think your mic's off now.
Probably is, I forget if you can check him out.
Oh, boy.
Can you get him a voice-activated one?
Yeah, you gotta get him something, stick a lavalier under his neck or something.
I'm just keeping Bob active, that's all. See, I told you, Pete turns it up a lot.
All right, the next is the continuation of the modification of the license for Gateway Motors, 381 Main Street. Welcome back.
Hey, thanks.
Now, do you have the plan from the Board of, from the Planning Board?
Not with me, no.
Because we don't, we don't have it.
It's over in the Selectmen's Office.
Did you look at it?
Yeah, I went through all of it. I would, unless someone, unless someone has a real question, I've gone through all of it, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Because it's been approved by the Planning Board, they went through it, and there are no issues.
If they're okay with it, and you, you looked at it, then I'm okay with that?
I went through it all.
All right, all right, does any, anybody have anything else they want to mention or say? All right, could I have a motion then?
Yeah, just, just one question. That's just gonna be storage for used cars that will be sold on-site, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so motion to approve by Alan?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Thank you so much. I have the service contract, too, that you asked for last time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, could you give that, could you give that to the clerk, please, and she can make it, put it in the file? Thank you, I appreciate that.
You too.
All right, take care.
Good luck.
All right, application from Trevor Watson for a one-day liquor license to be held on December 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Hello?
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Could I have a motion, please?
We're still, we're still under the 30 limit, so.
Oh, yes, they're under.
I move that we approve the application for Trevor Watson for a one-day license to be held December 14th, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you.
Great, thanks, guys, have a good holiday.
That's easy, huh? That was pretty easy.
Yeah, that was easy.
Thank you.
In and out.
Thank you very much.
Accept a donation in the amount of $200 from Christopher Massey in the memory of Rochelle Provost, on behalf of the friends and colleagues of her daughter Kathy Beal from the College of Math and Sciences at Westfield State University.
Yes, I have a, I move that we approve the $200 donation in memory of the late Rochelle Provost.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, next up, request to place a memorial bench on Onset, on Onset, I imagine, on the Onset Bluff or someplace, I don't know where it's going, but that's, we have a policy in place for benches, and it has to meet the policy anyway, so.
It gets reviewed by municipal maintenance, so.
Yeah, and the conditions, the type of bench and everything is all set aside in the policy.
Yeah, I think municipal maintenance, Mary already approved, saying that everything meets whatever they want.
Yes, they have one that is, needs replacement, so they have approved it.
So there you go. So could I have a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Application from Wareham Pizza Company, DBA Domino's, 170 Marion Road, Wareham for a common vicula license. Now, we do have an issue, because you have no approvals at all. I checked today.
You mean from the-
Not from Fire, not from anybody.
Oh, that's right, yes. Actually, we are, there are pending inspections, the store will be ready right up, the first week after the Thanksgiving, and the inspection's gonna be performed, like, they'll be done by that week, but we just wanted to be in this meeting, just because we are hoping to open right after the inspections, so we just didn't want to wait it for another week.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, we can, we can make it conditional, but I just want everybody to know, there are no inspections done yet. Go ahead.
I've got some concerns, not about the business. The Brown's Liquors, which is the original store there, there is one park, what I call, you know, pack light over to the left, a little bit to the right of the actual entrance into Brown's Liquors.
Right.
There is no light anywhere else, you know, it's a very dark area. I really think there should have been a site plan review, because it's a new business, and they probably need 10 actual parking spaces between employees, et cetera, which they're using what was originally approved for Brown's, and there is, has been no site plan. It was done as if it didn't need anything, but that's not my job or ours to make that decision. But there's insufficient lighting there, and there's been a history of doing things very short dollar-wise. I'm not gonna give into details, but I know that, who's doing the interior work for their, separating the building?
This is the same contractor that's currently working on the construction for us.
For you?
Yeah.
So you can, the construction is, I don't know if anybody knows, because I went and checked into this, is the original wall breaking the two places apart? The original wall built only went to the drop ceiling and stopped, so they had to go and rip it up.
No, it's gotta go all the way through the roof.
I understand, so I'm concerned, because we have nothing from anybody.
No, it's not gonna get approved without it, okay.
No, they had to go back and fix it.
Yeah.
So my concerns is, there's a lot of loose things here, you know, and I don't have-
We meet next week, we meet the week after.
If you want to approve it, but we're gonna, you know, I'd only approve this with the idea that we hold the license period until everything is signed off and done, because even the Fire Department has sent us a note saying they're not gonna approve anything to all the constructions.
Till the building's finished, yeah, I know.
Yeah, they're not gonna touch it.
They did send us a note saying the exact same thing. Look, I don't have a problem with it. If you guys want to make it conditional in that we hold the license, I'll be glad to hold it in the office.
We have no choice.
The thing is, is that then I will make sure personally that everything's in place beforehand, and even if I have to go to the building myself, I'll make sure that stuff is in place.
Everything will be signed off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything will be signed off.
So you'd look at the paper, they're all signed.
If you want to make a motion based on that condition.
I'll ask the question, by the way, I'll also call Dave and ask him to look at the lighting situation.
Yeah, because I don't think anybody's really looked at that. If you go by it tonight, you'll see, because Brown's has really no lighting on their building at all.
Yeah, they didn't have much at all.
They didn't spend any money, simple as that, you know, we had to have them take the, they had signs posted in the windows, so you couldn't see in, and the Police Department basically let them know, because of the violation of the sign-by-law, that if there was a robbery, that they weren't going in.
Right. So, all right, so that's, that's what we can do, and I'll hold all the license, I'll hold the license until I know that everything's done.
Sure.
And I will be talking, I will call and talk to the inspector on Monday to check about lighting. Lighting's going to be an issue.
Yeah, also for the parking lots, the parking spots, they, we actually, there was an initial site plan submitted when they got the first building permit order. We actually did the math, and it's currently, there's enough parking space. I don't have the exact numbers, but based on the scrap footage, footage, and plus, it's actually, if it's a dining location, so we actually did the math right when we applied for the building permits. So that was okay at the time.
Yeah, no, I believe that's the case, because they would have never given you the permit right out of the box.
Yeah, of course.
But there's still a lot of open things here, so I don't mind, I don't mind if they, if they want to give, if they want to do the license conditionally.
Of course.
But we're going to have to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Is it, is it ready to be inspected?
It is actually going to be ready right after Thanksgiving. It's going to be the first three days, will be done, they're working on the details still, but we are also on top of the dividing wall, the drywall separating the units, the premises. And the Fire Inspector was actually, he actually showed his concerns based on that, and our contractor is working on top on it to solve it. I believe the framing inspection was, like, this rough sign-off was done, but he's, he's on top of it, he's working on what's required.
I'm sure there was an issue with the firewall.
Yeah, we are aware of.
I mean, they probably needed, well, because it's two commercials, they probably needed a double layer of sheet rock on both sides.
Yeah, we already have the materials.
And you only put up the one layer, I'm sure.
Exactly.
Again, I'll just reiterate that-
Familiar with this stuff.
Because that was on the Planning Board when the Brown's Liquors was built and stuff. The layout of the parking area with the requirement for the trucks to even come around the building and the fire, et cetera. The idea of being okay is if, because there's enough space there, doesn't really make it right, because it has to basically look at what was originally approved when Brown's came in, as to where the access was around, et cetera, in the parking. That's my concern.
Okay.
Um.
All right, so it's up to everybody. What do you want to do? Want to make a conditional?
If we hold off till next week, do they have to come back? Can we just approve?
No, he doesn't have to come back.
He doesn't have to come back.
This just has a lot of-
We can't put it on next week's meeting because it's already been posted.
It's already posted.
Could we do it on forty-eight hour business?
Can we continue it?
No, it's not an emergency.
No.
Can't continue that?
Doesn't qualify.
Can we just continue it?
I would just move to approve conditionally and hold until the conditions are met.
That's all. I don't have a problem doing that. Just as long as we make sure and solve it.
And authorize the chairman to release the common vic once it's done.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. So you're, you will find that I am, I will be difficult if you're not, if everything isn't in place, okay?
Yeah, sure.
I'll make it miserable for them anyways.
I just want you to know, because otherwise I got to come back and listen to these guys, okay?
And that's no fun.
And that's no fun.
Yeah, we're working on it, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks.
Good luck. All right, next up is, any other town business not reasonably anticipated in forty-eight hours? I don't believe so. All right, Town Administrators Report, well, the Town Administrator had a very ill child and had to attend to her, so we're going to pass on him today. And the next would be Liaison Reports, and let's see, who should we start with? All right, Alan.
Just jump over me.
Hey, Bob, is it working?
Yeah, it's working.
Yeah, get used to it, not happening very often. Okay, Thursday, Friday, Saturday were busy days. On Thursday, I had the privilege of bringing the, about ten members of the Wareham Council on Aging, the Acting Director, et cetera, over to New Bedford. We met with the Director of the New Bedford Council on Aging at their facility, and also the Director of what they call Coastline, which runs a program for the age-friendly community that we're trying to basically become. They gave us guidelines, quite a bit of help, and they will continue to work with us. The Council on Aging right now is going to put together a survey, which is one of the first pieces of getting this started, and that survey will either go out, I don't think we can put it with tax bills and stuff, but we'll find a way to get it out to the public to, for the feedback to start this process. That was on Thursday. Friday, we had a legislative meeting up in Middleborough. Senator Roderick, Representative Gifford, Representative O'Rourke was there, and one other person. Senator Pacheco was not there because I was hoping to sit down and speak to him about the casino, et cetera, you know, and at least have some conversation. I was very disappointed that he wasn't there at all. There was interesting information given out. People probably have heard about the potential of a gas tax increase for gasoline. That's definitely on the agenda of the elected officials. They also talked about maybe doing it a little different way, so it's not a regressive tax, which I really don't see how it's going to work well, of basically charging people the increase based on mileage that you drive, which, you know, is really, to me, is not fair. If someone happens to live fifty miles from work, you know, and they have to drive fifty miles, they're going to pay, you know, more than someone who, you know, lives in Boston. It just doesn't make sense. And there's also, they're looking at doing a tax for carbon, you know, carbon footprint as well. So these things are actually seriously being looked at, we'll see what happens, but at the least that's going to happen is going to be an increase in the, in the gas tax. Because right now, Massachusetts is at twenty-six cents. Most of the states around us are somewhere between forty-two and forty-eight. So they have, they can easily justify raising it because we're so far below everybody else. So unfortunately, it's more expensive for our residents, and there's nothing much we can do about it.
Unfortunately, they're planning on using that money for the T.
No, actually, that money is supposed to be used for roads and stuff.
Yeah, but it's not. It's the-
No, this, we talked about-
The whole thing is to go to the T.
No, we talked about this, and at the, the reps and the senator and stuff said this was, this is based on pushing hard to get increased Chapter ninety money.
It's supposed to go twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot of money.
It's a huge amount of money.
People's bills, that's a lot.
So it's not just the T. The T has its own bond bill, et cetera.
But the T, the T was made the suggestion. It was, there was three, three, three pieces of the T platform or proposal.
Yeah.
And one of them was raising the gas tax, and the other, of course, was charging everybody who comes into the city.
Yeah.
Having transponders, every time you come into the city, you're paid.
And also, they want the Chapter ninety money.
Yeah.
So it's all part of the same thing.
So the T's going to get this money, we know what's going to happen to it.
Well, yeah.
They're going to use it for the T. So all the people in the Commonwealth are going to pay for Boston to have T service.
As always.
That's nice.
So we're already subsidizing them, right?
Well, yeah, we are.
Yeah.
But what about Springfield and all the other places? Why should they be subsidizing?
All right, so the other piece was the one and a half billion dollar school piece that I already talked about. Plastic ban bill will come back the first of January, was real close to getting passed. And again, I read through it, you know, several times now, and it basically states that any existing, you know, law that's in place by any city or town goes away.
I read that, too.
And the way this bag bill is written, it's not as restrictive as everybody else's bills are in place. So we're dealing with that. And then on Saturday, I went over to the Sierra Club meeting at the Cape Cod Community College, and as I walked in, my partner next door here was at the meeting as well. So the two of us were treated to a vegetarian lunch, which was terrible. I do mean terrible.
Didn't mind it at all.
I thought it was seaweed, but I wasn't sure what they were serving.
Yeah.
But it was, you say, you say it's kale, I think it was seaweed. And the basic piece was climate, you know, climate control, the climate issues. And of course, you know, we have people on one side that say it's global warming. I have some friends that are geologists that tell me we're in the beginning of an ice age, so there's obviously no common bond of any of this stuff, what's really going on. The only thing I do know is if you go to Westport, when there's a high tide, the roads along Westport flood, they never used to do that. So we know there's something happening. We know that we have extreme storms, Boston, I think in twenty eighteen, downtown Boston was flooded, you know, and the winter storms and the summer storms are more severe, and that's what's causing our problem. We get a, a real bad storm with a real good high tide, and you get flooding, so it's, it's just, you know, things happen with it like hundreds of years at a time, it doesn't happen overnight. But we know we're having some kind of weather issues because of the severity. So we have to look at it realistically and be proactive coming down the line with it. It was interesting, they talked about fracking of gas, you know, for natural gas piece, and how this is not going to be in place for a long time, it's temporary, but yet the federal government's pushing for these pipelines to go in, which we'll pay for, for twenty years, and they're talking as little as five years from now, they may not need this stuff at all.
Demand.
Demand, et cetera. The other piece is that we have our energy aggregation program, and they talked about that you can specify some of these plans, how much of alternative energy you want in the plan you buy, each individual. So say if you wanted a hundred percent alternative energy, you would pay more money, but you could get it basically through solar or wind power. So our next contract comes up in about a year and a half, and maybe this will be available to the public who really want to do something like this and willing to pay money, you know, for alternative energy. So there's a lot of interesting things were discussed, and it was quite interesting. Jim and I went to Chick-fil-A later on at the end of the day and had a real meal.
You know, it's funny, because I read a story recently that the carbon dioxide level in the ocean is higher now than the carbon dioxide on land.
Yeah.
And that's not as, that's not as a result of any global warming, but every time that's ever happened in history, it signaled an oncoming ice age.
Exactly.
So they, they're beginning to think now that we'll be turning into having an ice age. So there's been some change. Now, whether we had something to do with it or not, nobody knows. The group, the college that I was doing the study, said that they, they don't have enough information to know whether we contributed or not.
Takes hundreds of years for these things to happen.
They, they know that the, the volcanoes that go erupt and go into the ocean-
Yeah.
Put, raise the levels quite a bit, and they, that's one of the things they point to, but they didn't know.
As the stuff goes into the atmosphere, it basically blocks the sun, which makes eventually tell the dinosaurs all that.
Yeah, so. Anyway, it's, you know, for sure, though, I'm sure it's not over in eight years, which I just heard somebody say, so I think we're okay for the next eight years.
That happened in my lifetime.
I think we're all right in the next eight years.
Good for at least ten.
Somebody said twelve, but we're already into it, so I guess now it's only eight.
Ten. I'm done.
All right, let's see, Jim?
Yeah, just follow up on that. A lot of things that they talked about, we've already done the vulnerability study, the aggregation. They talked about, you know, promoting wind and solar and moving to reduce the timeline to have zero and negative CO2 emission, you know, instead of, so net zero.
Net zero.
And also, he touched on the cost for, per kilowatt hour for clean energy generation. That's like point one nine cents per kilowatt hour, and I think we pay point, like, point one one, you know, depending if you did the aggregate or not. It's considerably more money. And we're all, I think we subsidize the solar farms as it is, right?
We sure do.
And we have a number of them in town, so I would think that we'd hopefully be able to get some, a little break on that. Do you know what I'm saying? Because it's just local, and there's no, the only fuel is, what, sun?
Sun.
I don't think they pay for that. So anyhow, I think solar energy is-
Not yet.
I think it's good in, you know-
Solar credits, that's the next thing.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do it overnight, but I think it's a good direction to go, clean energy.
You know that, did you hear that Brookline banned gas and oil?
New gas hookups.
New gas and oil hookups, no gas, no oil, all electric.
Yep.
I don't think that's going to clear the A.G., but the point is that, and not to mention, you know, electric's still, as far as I know, the majority of electric is still produced by fossil fuels.
Fossil hydro. Hydro, we have-
Well, the majority is still fossil fuels.
We get hydro from up north, don't we?
Yeah, but hydro is also has the same-
They have drawbacks.
Serious drawbacks.
So it's coal, it's this, that, it's all different, different choices, but it's still fossil fuels producing it, so I don't know what the point is there, but I'm good.
Actually, coal, coal's virtually disappeared in most places now. They shut them all down.
Yeah, I know they've been doing that.
Nuclear's going away, too.
You're next.
I don't know who can top this. I mean, hydro means no fish, corn, you know, corn fueled stuff means no rainforest, I mean, there's, you know, there's just too many people on the planet.
Well, just-
That's the real issue here.
Well, we're not going to be able, you know, it's not, it's not just the people, it's the cows and the birds and the dogs and the, the fish and the, you know, them all. I mean, we all contribute, you know?
Isn't it interesting, I wrote this down, and I think I got it right, Massachusetts represents two percent of the world emissions. Massachusetts, this is, this is a fact they gave us at this meeting on Saturday. Said Massachusetts is two percent of world emissions.
That's crazy.
Well, but what, so if you look at that, what percentage of, what percentage of landmass are we?
Not two percent.
No, not even.
Not point, not point zero two percent.
Where, nothing, where, dot.
I, you know, this was a fact that they gave out, and I was scratching my head, and I'm like, what?
So what about New York and, you know, places like that?
Don't ask me. New York, you know, it's very-
Was New York ten percent?